Okay. Thank you for your patience. Had a little equipment difficulty. This call is called Supervising Meeting Order, June, uh, work session, uh, June 3rd, this time. Uh, well, let me back up. I'm ahead of the game. We gotta do, uh, we called it order, but, uh, we're really, we're in plan and commission. I got all messed up too, didn't I? All right, called meeting to order, plan and commission, uh, consideration minutes. Have a approval.
I'll make a motion.
Motion approved minutes.
Second.
Second by, motion by Brad, second by Daniel, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, old business.
Invocation.
Yeah, Jared, you wanna play for us?
Uh? Well, actually, I was gonna, since I'd skipped it, I bobbled around, I was gonna come back when we did the, uh, Supervising Meeting, and let it pray, but we can go and do it now. You'll go and get that done.
I'll be glad to.
Right. When I realized I'd bobbled the other, I thought we'd just roll back, catch it at the top.
Might need two of them, you know?
Yeah.
Let them pray at both times.
Yeah.
Let's pray. I would do one pause before we ever get started, and just thank you. Thank you for the blessings that you have given to us in these days, Lord, how you provided protection for us. How, Father, you've given us your presence. Lord, you've provided wisdom to us, you've given us discernment to make decisions that have helped us to navigate uncertainties. Lord, you just blessed us abundantly as a community. I thank you that you've provided us with leaders who are willing to come, who sacrifice their time, effort, energy for the betterment of our community. Father, I pray that you would bless them specifically today with what they need, everything that they need. Wisdom, discernment, judgment, Lord, a concern for every single person in this community. Thank you, Lord, that you've given us this platform. You authorize this form of government so that we can participate, and I thank you, Lord, for that privilege. I pray, Father, we won't ever take it for granted, Christ has a commitment.
Actually, I guess Jay really wasn't on the agenda. All right, um, old business.
Okay, so there are three hearings scheduled for Monday to 7th. Y'all willing to leave on that night?
I think I'm good.
I'm good. I recognize them all. Yeah. All right.
Okay, so under new considerations, the first item is a rezonable.
Request for Bill Mosby on Highway forty-three. Uh, Mr. Mosby is seeking to rezone twenty-five point seventy-six acres from A2 to RE1. Uh, the A2 doesn't allow for a development of subdivisions, and he's proposing a residential, uh, single-family development with seven lots. That's an aerial view of the property, and this is his, uh, survey plat showing the seven lots. All of the lots will front on the public road and meet or exceed the hundred-foot minimum lot width required by the RE1 zone. Uh, none of the lots are smaller than three acres, and the developer is proposing a two-thousand-square-foot minimum heated and cooled living space. These are views of that property. And then these are surrounding properties. I'm not sure if he's here today or not, um.
So we're just gonna need to make a motion to set the public?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to set.
All right, motion to set the public hearing by Brad.
Second.
Second by Steve. Any discussion, not all in favor say aye. All opposed.
I, I should've got this in discussion, but we, we probably want some other verbiage in there, too. Not we, no, no trailers and some stuff like that.
Yeah. It's all gonna be minimum two pounds square foot home.
Well, you know, home is, you know.
I think you can get a two-thousand-square-foot trailer home now.
Yeah. Y'all are rezoning to RE1?
Oh, okay. Not allowed? Yeah. For mobile homes.
Right.
All right, the next item is a conditional use permit for Mason Rogers at two forty-eight Mount Helm Road. Uh, Mr. Rogers is seeking the conditional use permit to place, uh, a manufactured home on this two-point-five-seven-acre parcel. It's owned by his grandparents. Uh, the property is zoned RE1. He's applying under the hardship section of the RE1 zone. His grandparents are elderly, and his grandfather has health issues that require constant care. That's an aerial view of the property. And this is his site plan. The manufactured home is gonna be in the rear of the property. It won't be visible, uh, from Highway twenty-five or Mount Helm Road. He's considering a nineteen eighty-six single-wide home, and if his application is approved, uh, his grandfather will separate, give him a separate acre for the home to sit on. This is a view of that property. The home will be back behind those sheds in the back. This is his grandfather's home.
Yeah, one thing I think we've talked about is be sure we got the buffer, the tree line buffer that's there, that's gotta remain. And be sure that they understand that. I'm good with setting the public hearing, as long as they're of the understanding that the buffer has to be there, that we can't identify it from areas behind it or on the twenty-five area, so. So. Yeah, and no rental.
Yeah.
I have this family.
A question.
Okay.
Sir.
Now, notice, between family members, if this works out and the father is gonna deed the son an acre for placing a trailer on it, if the Health Department determines that it needs to be one-point-three acres or four acres to have, uh, this, well, two acres, uh, he can, I know it's his father, and his father will say, yeah, you can run your fill line on me, but if things change, and the father's no longer living there, or the son's no longer living there, what, how do we, I mean, I, it's not our problem, but they, they've come making our problem.
Well, you can with a health, um, I guess certificate or something from the doctor stating that, you know, the grandfather has a medical need. They will let him sometime, let people tie in to the grandfather's system, but it's temporary, you know? But if he gets an acre, he should be able to get his own system, but, you know, he won't get a permit until he passes the Health Department and gets the. Right, well, for a, for an approved system. They'll have to approve whatever it is he's gonna do.
In the past, we have, um, and Renee, you can correct me if I'm wrong about this. My recollection is, in the past, in sensitive situations like this, sensitive areas like this, you've required that when the hardship is no longer present, that the trailer has to be removed.
How do you enforce that?
Yeah, that's, well, I'm sure that hadn't been done very often.
How do you really enforce it, because?
Keep in mind that it's RE1, and it, so there's a very narrow and limited circumstance in which a mobile home can be allowed, and that is by clearing, to your satisfaction, the hardship requirement. Right? That's the basis, that's the triggering mechanism that allows it.
So there are no mobile homes in this area?
Yes.
There's, there's some around.
I would assume it's a lot of grandfathering, Jay, uh, that where you've had situations that predate zoning.
I'm in no way trying to block it or make it. I, I'm really more looking out for the people. It's so that they don't, they don't get down the road and find out that they don't have enough. Say he moves and his sister's gonna move in, and then that doesn't, not the right person, so she's gotta come back, and then we say, well, you don't have enough room. The Health Department says, no. You're tied into somebody else's sewer.
I think there would be enough room at that, at that site, given the circumstances we're talking about, one, one-plus acre of property.
Thank you.
That a stick-built house, a compliant structure could be put there.
Okay.
So a condition could be, and maybe should be, you may remain as presently constituted until such time as the hardship is no longer present, at which time there must be a transition from the mobile home to a compliant structure at that location.
Yep.
You, you're in charge of the conditions that you set. I'm suggesting to you that that's a sensitive area, and you may wanna think about something like that.
I think, I think that's a good point. I think that's how it needs to go down, to add that to it, and then also wanna be sure we got the buff. The buffer's the main thing for me on the initial phase of it, 'cause I'll, I'm gonna be sure that's blocked from people that are around there, they're not just seeing another trailer stuck in there, so.
You know, we wanna make sure that we got ways that people that truly are experiencing hardship are able to accommodate that. We wanna try to do that, but I think we're well-served to make sure there really is a hardship.
And I think both of those are justified in this case. So can we relay that to them, Ms. Renee?
Yes, sir.
On that? So I'll make a motion to set that public hearing, but with their understanding that that's the route we're gonna go on the hearing on the fourteenth.
Okay.
All right, got them. Motion to set the public hearing by Daniel, second by Jay. All in favor say aye. All opposed.
All right, the next item is a conditional use permit for Martin Blough at three eighty-two Barker Road. Uh, Mr. Blough is seeking the conditional use permit to operate a business that will process used cooking oil for resale to the animal food industry. Uh, this is a seventy-five-point-twenty-nine-acre parcel, it's zoned A2. That's an aerial view. Uh, light and heavy industrial uses are listed as a conditional use in the A2 zone. Um, no chemicals will be used in the refinement process. Uh, heat from the sun will be used, uh, to cause water and oil separation. Uh, this shows their, uh, tanks that they're gonna have out there, the three tanks, uh, that will be used. Uh, they also show a, uh, boiler, a small boiler, boiler, that when the temperatures aren't adequate, uh, it will provide the heat source. Uh, once separated, the water will be extracted and taken off-site to be disposed of by a licensed company. Uh, the applicant contacted MDEQ to see if any permits were needed, uh, since no chemicals will be used, and there will be no emissions from the electric boiler, a permit was not required. This is a view of that property. Those are the boiler, boiler, I mean, the, uh, tanks that will be used. That's an existing warehouse that's already on the property. And then these are surrounding properties. They're here today, if you have any questions for them.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
To set the hearing.
Yeah, we're setting.
Yes.
Motion by Steve, set the public hearing, second by Brad. Any discussion? Not, all in favor say aye. All opposed.
All right, the last item is a conditional use permit for Cool Deep Singh at eleven twenty-three Old Fannin Road, Suite B. Uh, Mr. Singh is seeking a conditional use permit to open a liquor store in the Exxon Convenience Store, um, at eleven twenty-three Old Fannin Road. It's gonna be in Suite B. The rental space contains approximately one thousand seven hundred and fifty square feet. This is a point-nine-six acre parcel, it's zoned C2, and the property is within the qualified resort area. Liquor stores are listed as a conditional use permit in the C2 zone. They cannot be located within five hundred feet of the property lines of any existing residential use, residentially-zoned property, church, school, hospital, convalescent or nursing home, cemetery, civic organization building or facility, public or private park or playground, or any property zoned S1 special use district. So this shows the distance from the closest residential use, and it is further than five hundred feet. It's five hundred and, approximately five hundred and seventy-five feet. That is Suite B of the, uh, convenience store. That's a view of the store itself. And then these are just surrounding properties.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to set the public hearing.
Second.
Motion to set the public hearing by Daniel, second by Jay. Any discussion? Not, all in favor say aye. All opposed. Okay.
That's my cue.
Nuisance property.
First, uh, first item under nuisance considerations is the Dorothy Johnson Estate, nuisance property one-eleven Burnett Drive, District Two parcel. Uh, at this time, we'll open that public hearing, I'll ask Renee to demonstrate with the photos. If anyone is here on behalf of the Dorothy Johnson Estate, they need to, uh, be prepared to come forward, please.
All right, so we received the complaint, uh, March twenty-fourth of this year, uh, about rubbish and debris and appliances. Uh, the mail was sent, and, uh, one of the letters was received. Kathy received a call, uh, from someone asking for extra time to clean up the property. And then these are the new pictures.
So, so here's, here's my suggestion on that, is that we, um, I'll give them thirty days to finish it, but if they, I don't wanna come back.
Yeah.
So if it's, if it's not approved or checked off by you guys in thirty days, I want it to go to Justice Court. So declare a nuisance, nuisance?
Yeah.
And give me a thirty-day window to have them work on that. We can reach out to them and say, hey, you got thirty days? Do what? I don't know.
No.
But, uh, thirty days, Ms. Renee?
Okay.
And then straight to Justice Court for that. That's my motion.
Go ahead, declare a nuisance.
Is, is there anyone here on the Dorothy Johnson Estate property? You'll come forward, please?
Okay.
You come forward, please. Please give your name and address for the record.
Good morning.
Good morning. Morning.
My name is Vera Jones.
Okay.
I'm Dorothy Harper Johnson's daughter.
Okay.
Your, your address?
Great.
Oh, I'm sorry, one-eleven Burnett Drive, Brandon, Mississippi, three-nine-zero-four-seven.
Yeah, so we see on the pictures that you're making progress on cleaning it up, so I'm gonna give you another thirty days to work on that. Is that suitable to you?
Okay, I thought I had the majority of everything done, everything that was, I just came down here from Michigan to do this.
Sure.
So.
I, I think you're making progress the right way. I'm, what I'm saying is, today, I think our inspectors need to go back out, double-check everything, maybe they give you a punch list to say, hey, I need to get you a few more items done. That way, we're, you're on the same page with our guys, and that gives you another month.
Yes, sir.
To get it all right, right way at that point. And then if it's not, then, uh, the board will take action from there. Well, the board will already have taken action, but, um, I think you're on the right progress route, so.
Okay, I'm, I'm.
Just continue to work with, I guess, be sure they got your name and number.
Okay.
And they'll get in touch with you, maybe create them a punch list, hey, this is what we need done. You got thirty days, and then they'll come back out, give you a final inspection, and you should be okay.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you for your work on it.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Get.
All right.
We will close that public hearing. Uh, Daniel, I think your motion would be to go ahead and declare the nuisance.
Declare the nuisance for the thirty-day grace window for us to come back and evaluate it.
Okay. All right, motion by Daniel, declare this nuisance, uh, second by.
Be sure.
All in favor say aye. All opposed.
Item two, under nuisance considerations, is the George Taylor nuisance property at one thirteen Burnett Drive. This is a District Two parcel. We'll open that public hearing, I'll ask for Renee to demonstrate with the photos. If there's anyone here on behalf of George Taylor, they need to be prepared to come forward and speak.
All right, so the, uh, complaint was received on March twenty-fourth, rubbish and debris, appliances and inoperable vehicles. Uh, the mail was delivered, it was received. Uh, these pictures were taken on the twenty-fourth. Uh, Kathy did, uh, receive a call from someone also requesting extra time to clean up. These are the new pictures that were taken, uh, yesterday.
Yeah, I think we're in the same position as we were, right? So I think you're doing a good job getting it to where it needs to get to, and I'm gonna do the same thing I did just with the one before, 'cause I'm gonna give you an extra thirty days to finish it up, get it cleaned up, and then, uh, just report back to Ms. Kathy, let her come back out and give you a little punch list. This is what needs to be done. She'll follow back up with you in thirty days, and then we'll go from there. Does that sound all right with you?
Yeah, but I wanna know why, uh, I stay in the country.
Huh?
Okay, and then, I stay in the country, uh, I should be able to do what I wanna do with my property, 'cause I've been cleaning it up. Meanwhile, I had all that stuff on there, I couldn't get back in the back, back there where I wore.
Yeah.
'Cause it had, you know, it wet back there.
I understand.
And I had to put it in the front, but I clean up every year.
Yeah.
And, matter of fact, I voted for you when you ran for the office.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
And I felt like that, uh, you should've came out and, 'cause the new subdivision that they built over there was no problem until they built that subdivision there. And over there, I can say that was public nuisance.
Sure.
Same thing y'all said.
Yeah, I got it, and, and.
'Cause all that racket they keeping up over there, when, when, when nobody out there but me.
I understand.
And our folks.
Yeah, and, and, and I'll say a couple things to that. First, I appreciate you voting for me, thank you for doing that, right?
That's right.
But you did that for me to uphold the integrity of our county, right? To be sure that we're doing the right things in the right spots, and that's what I'm doing in this ordinance right here, is to be sure that we're trying to keep everything as good and proper in the area as we can. That's the power you put in me to entrust in me, right?
That's right.
I'm trying to do what you did by voting for me, right? To serve you in that same way. So by doing that, if we've got other issues that are out there that needs to be addressed, we definitely will do those things, without a question of it. And I think you've done a great job on doing it. I know it's wet, the weather's, uh, kinda rough to do it, that's why I was gonna give you another thirty days, let it dry back out, get back things, uh, to the visual side of the way you want it. I know you want your property good, I know you want the property values good, and that's why we look at these type of things, where things that are brought to our attention, we try to keep the county in the best perspective. And I know you got the same feelings in your heart to keep the county in the best visual perspective as we can get it as well, right?
Right, right.
So I appreciate your effort and your work on the deal, I think you've done a great job on what you've done so far. Just keep plugging along, we'll get it cleaned up, check with Ms. Kathy, and we'll head from there, and, uh, hopefully we're in a good spot in another thirty days.
Mr. Taylor, so you know, uh, the county didn't go out and do this, if there was someone from your neighborhood gave this away?
Well, there's somebody called, but I went to the neighborhood and asked who, who called, they said, they know, but they didn't call.
But we don't.
So it had to be one of y'all.
No.
That, that, to do that.
Uh, I went out, I went out, I went out and looked at it after it was called in, right? To be sure that what somebody said was actually existing, the way it was.
I wish you to stop by and talk with me, because I'm a man just like you, a man.
Yeah, that's right.
And, and like I said, now I voted for you.
All right.
And I voted for you because I feel like your work was good.
Well, I appreciate that. Thank you, thank you for doing that, so.
And I wanna put people in the office that's gonna do the right thing.
Right. And that's what I feel like we're doing right here, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So we're communicating with you, our group's been to you, I've been out and seen it myself with my own eyes.
Yeah.
So we're, we're gonna get it done the right way, and that's what we're doing here.
You know, other people in the neighborhood got stuff all in there, but I didn't go and call on them.
Okay.
And, and whatever going on on their property, that's their property.
Okay, look, okay.
Hold on, I'm, I'm through with this man right here.
Yeah, I know, but I'm, we're gonna have to, you only, you only had three minutes to talk.
Three minutes? Y'all called me down here for three minutes?
Listen, this man, we, we do understand what you have, but if you got other places that are nuisance, if you wanna call them in, but we don't.
I ain't gonna call them.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, that's the way it happens, he's telling you the truth, and that, we don't go out and look at them. Somebody, and mo, nobody usually is gonna step up and say, yeah, I'm the one that called it in.
Well, I'm a man that do it.
I know cases where the neighbors or the relatives have called things in, but they're not gonna say that.
Yeah.
So anyway, we, he just got you, he's doing you the right thing. He gonna try to give you more time, clean it up, and standing here talking, telling us about all the other problems is not gonna help.
Well, and, but, but we're gonna look for, if there's other problems out there, Ms. Kathy will be glad to check on it.
Yeah, we're trying to work with.
We want to hear you're right.
Yeah, yeah.
A lot of times, we don't even get this far, most time, a lot of times, just declare a nuisance and you wind up in court.
Thank you.
We're trying to work with.
You're doing a good job, I appreciate you doing it.
Right.
And, uh, we're on the right path.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
All right, thank you.
And that might ain't Mr. Johnson, and not Mr..
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Taylor, my cousin, he dead. He been dead ever since nineteen ninety-six.
Uh-oh, well, thank you, Mr. Johnson.
And, 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 uh, we got a new owner of the property now.
That you?
Oh, good.
Now, ain't nothing mean, but it's my daughter.
Your daughter?
Oh.
So we just took over the property now, so that being why I was doing everything, like I said, I was gonna clean up anyway.
So you're cleaning up from where Mr. Taylor had passed away?
Yeah.
Some of his stuff? Okay, well, I appreciate that even more, I mean, now you tell a little different side of the story, I see.
And then, and then on the road out there, for years, I cut the property over there, across the road over there, when that's where we got property. I cut all that, had all that bush out and kept it around where people can get through, the school bus can come down through there and see, right away, because the bushes were grown up taller than I was, so. Uh, I had the guy come bush out that this morning, I mean, yesterday, the bush out them corners out there where you can see and everything. I picked up paper for forty years, all down through the road, all out there on the road, and I cut all the way out to the, the North Shore Highway, I cut all that there.
We need to hire you full-time.
I was about to say, money.
Y'all ain't paying nothing.
Well.
I don't wait for nothing.
We got good benefits.
All right.
I don't want no benefit, I want the money.
I appreciate it. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
All right.
All right, I got them.
Hey, Mr. Johnson, check with Ms. Kathy right there, be sure she's got your contact stuff, so she can give you a punch list, so.
All right, I got them. Motion to declare the nuisance.
For thirty days, same, same situation.
By Daniel, second by.
Second.
Jay. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed.
That, that hearing is closed.
Yeah.
Uh, I agree.
You know, you know usually how that follows up, right? But I wanna thank the sheriff for the great job they're doing out there. Kinda always, that goes down, right? So that's usually what comes right after that, so I thought I'd get that part. That's right, that's exactly right, I believe it.
All right.
Item three, under the nuisance consideration, is a vote, Singh, I probably butchered that, and I apologize. Uh, it's a nuisance property at two fifty-seven Mount Helm Roads, District Two property. We'll open that public hearing, I'll ask Renee to demonstrate with the photo. If, if Mr. Singh or anyone representing Mr. Singh is present, they can come forward at this time, please.
So we received this complaint on March tenth, rubbish and debris, inoperable vehicles and appliances. Some of the certified mail was received. These pictures were taken February, um, twenty-sixth, it says.
Yes, um, all those, uh, belong to Ms. Dacey, and I've been told them multiple times, they done most of cleaned it. I still see yesterday, there's old vehicles still there, and I request them to move it or even have to tow it.
Okay.
Uh, she's the one, she and her husband, they, the couple live there.
So they rented it from you?
Yes, sir.
So they rented it from you?
Yes, sir. But all those properties belong to them, I request them either throw away or fix it. They said they working on it.
But you own the property?
Yes, sir.
So that's why it kinda falls back on you then?
Tell me how much, tell me, tell me how much time you need to get it cleaned up?
I get, I had, you know, hard problems.
Right.
And I had to put a thing back to you, and, uh, I've been, you know, been sick.
Sure. Well, do, do you got a timeframe or a plan on how you're gonna get it cleaned up?
Yeah, I must, I must start back on that.
All right.
You, you may not be able to, health-wise, do you have some people that can help you?
Yeah, I think I do.
Okay.
All right, so, I, I'm gonna go a little longer on her, just to give her a little bit of time to get this right, right? So let's just say, let's just go sixty days, right? So sixty days, we'll come back at it and evaluate it. Um, if not, we're gonna have to take action to get it cleaned up, right? But that sixty days gives you time to work through the summer, and basically try to get, control this thing by August.
Yes, sir.
Okay? Does that sound good to you?
It sounds good.
Okay.
All right, so.
I appreciate it.
I appreciate you here.
Thank you.
Um, so, thank you for coming in, though, I appreciate you standing up for it, so.
Thank you.
That'll be my motion for declaring a nuisance, and then we'll go sixty days as well on that.
All right. Daniel, uh, most, Daniel made a motion to declare the nuisance, give them sixty days to, uh, continue and go reevaluate. Uh, second by, uh, Brad. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed? Okay?
Mr. President, uh, and for the record, that, that hearing is closed. Uh, item four is the Kelly Shoemaker nuisance property at two ninety-two Red Oak Road, this is District Four property. We'll open that public hearing, I'll ask for Renee to demonstrate with the photos if Ms. Shoemaker or anyone on behalf of Ms. Shoemaker's here. Uh, when, when it's your time to speak before the board, I'll need a name and an address.
All right, so.
I'm Nelson Westerfield.
We received the complaint, uh, in March of this year, uh, in regard to rubbish and debris, inoperable vehicles, appliances, and, uh, the door. These pictures were taken March twenty-ninth, uh, the certified mail was delivered. And these are the new pictures.
Hey, we got a problem here. This is not in Daniel's district.
Well, based on that, uh, district lines y'all set before we came on board, they moved it out of there.
I'll let Daniel handle it, man, he's been, he's on a roll. Who are you, go ahead?
I'm Nelson Westerfield, I'm Kelly's husband.
Oh, what's your address?
Two ninety-two Red Oak Road.
How much of it have you?
I've gotten all the cars that said for that one truck that's sitting right there, and the one, the white one behind it, that one, and they all belong to my kids.[1761.63]
Does that one run, no, I could see it hadn't run in a while.
It needs a fuel pump. My son bought it, never fixed it, but, oh.
How long's been there?
Well, you do miss favor.
Three, four months.
If you don't get it running, can you pull it backwards about fifty yards?
They go to the junkyard.
Well, okay.
I mean, I'm having to do it on the weekend when I'm off.
All right, you've done a good job. It looks to me like, clean the rest of that up in thirty days, and call them and tell them I got it cleaned up, and we'll go adios.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
All right, motion by Steve, you want to declare a nuisance?
Yeah.
Thirty, thirty, thirty days. Clear nuisance in thirty days. Second by Jay. All in favor of saying aye? All opposed?
For the record, that hearing is closed. Item five, under the nuisance considerations, Angela Dennis, Charles Ross, Jennifer Ross, nuisance property at eleven eighty-eight A Tricken Bridge Road. We'll open that public hearing. I'll ask for Nate to demonstrate with photos.
All right, so.
Anyone on behalf of, of the individuals who've been named can come forward.
Was received in March in regard to rubbish and debris and inoperable vehicles.
Please, Sheriff.
Some of the mail was received. And there has been cleanup. Mr. Ross called and met with Kathy. She says that all the vehicles run and have current tags. He's got the grass, and it looks much better.
You got, that's a big yard.
Is this mine?
Yes, sir.
I didn't see a, I didn't see a district number on it. Looks like the.
Maybe a district file.
No file, you know, it's not, no district number on it, so.
This is where you tell him you voted for it.
I wish I could, but I, I didn't get registered and voted in time. I only purchased the property about two years ago. My name's Charles Ross. I live at eleven eighty-eight A. I'm actually the only one that lives there. I apologize, this was completely my fault. My wife left at the beginning of February, left me with two kids, one of them being special needs. They play outside. I inherited three of the two vehicles you saw out there. They were tied up in probate, and I couldn't do anything with them until I had another family where they probably just take it to their property, get it off mine. Completely my fault, no excuses. I let it get away from me 'cause I got overwhelmed. Once I spoke with Ms. Kathy, I, we got out there, we got it taken care of, and I do genuinely apologize. It was completely my fault.
That's good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's over.
Sure, we all see you.
I, I hope not, sir. Thank you very much.
Remember Steve Gaines, two years ago. While we're talking.
Mr. Mr. President, I think I can state what we wanna say about that one is no action taken, public hearing closed. And, and we'll express our appreciation of Ms. Ross for doing what we literally, that's what we want to see when we get in the middle of this process, so that's, I'm grateful that we, we had that success story there.
All right, I have a motion to, uh.
Jurn.
Jurn, meeting, next meeting we held Thursday, July first.
Motion.
All right, motion, Jurn by Steve, second by Daniel. All in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Now, moving right on to the board's supervisors meeting, called order this time, and right off, out of the gates, Mr. Slate, doesn't even have time to sit down.
Yeah, thank you.
Gentlemen, if I may ask for your indulgence, Carl Franco is here, and so typically, in our work session, we don't have a public comment.
Right.
About the only place we know to put Carl on our agenda is under public comment. We keep him a steady appointment under that section, so we don't have.
Kinda hidden, I couldn't see him back there.
Exactly, kinda, kinda keeping him out of the, out of the viewpoint there. If, if you will indulge, Carl is here to speak to you and give you an update about the new courthouse construction project. That is an anticipated litigation matter, and I need you to entertain the idea of us going into a brief executive session to hear from Carl, so that he doesn't have to sit here through the entire rest of this. It, so if you would indulge me with about a, maybe a five or ten-minute executive session, so we can talk about anticipation of litigation, I would appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you, motion discussed. Need you go into the next session?
Okay, motion by Jay, need to go into the next session, second by Steve. All in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
I, I wanna encourage folks that are here to participate in the meeting to, to stay around. We're not gonna be long in this, and we'll come right back into our work session.
Okay, all right.
So we'll be going into talk anticipation of litigation.
Let's go into the next session for litigation.
Discuss possible litigation. By Jay, second by Steve. Any discussion? All in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed?